Good evening. It is Monday, August 28th, 2023, 6:00 PM in the Susan Tolly-Lyshley Boardroom of the 1887 Building. I'd like to have a call to order and a roll call, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard. He is excused or at the high school open house. But Mr. Gatten, here. Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Reckles?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
This meeting was noticed for state statutes and do we have any community participation tonight? Okay? Yeah, it looks like you're the only one tonight. I've read the statement many times for you, so hopefully you can remember.
I feel weird if you didn't speak.
I know. It would be a weird feeling. Steve Perkins? A number of years ago, I was doing stuff with Jimmy Johnson Milwaukee and I got an issue with a customer. And I called the owner of the store and I said, Matt, and I explained the situation, which I don't remember what it is today, but I remember this works very clearly. Said, what do you do in this situation? He said, I don't know, Steve. I never would have put myself in that situation. You guys are in that situation right now. When you look at what's been happening within the school district, whether it be the gender support plan or policy 533 not being followed. You guys are now in that position that none of you planned on being. You know, when you took your spot on the board, were you Heather or you Adam? You probably had no idea that was going on. I don't think either of you knew what was going on either. And from your email, Julie, I know you didn't know what was going on. And same with Matt. And you guys are in a tough spot now where you're talking with attorneys in closed sessions on what's going to be moving forward when it comes down to the kids of this community. And that is a tough position. Unfortunately, the position that you guys are in also is a liable position on yourself too. When a policy is not being followed without the board's knowledge for over five years, whether or not you agree with that policy or not, any other position on the planet, that would be a fireable offense. That is the position you're in today on whether or not you should be firing Jason Padlock for not following policy 533. And when you talk with the attorney today, you should be talking with him about her or her about that too. Everybody's scared in the world that we're in. There's words of other another lockdown coming up, another round of COVID. There's always something scaring us. There's possibilities of other people coming into our town and scaring us. Don't be afraid. The people of this town will understand the decision that you made if you're making it based off of what needs to be done in following policy. Because as board members, that is your job. Jason, I hope they don't take it personally, but you should be fired.
Steve, you're violating board policy right now with your comments about.
To move on to the approval of the school board minutes. You have a copy of the regular enclosed session school board meeting minutes from August 14.
Maybe I do want to clarify. It's someone made personal back in the meeting. Did leave policy 533 is related to staff hiring procedures. That policy was not violated. We did have adults, parents present in that according to the letter of the law of the policy and then procedure. So whether that policy is changed, revised or updated, I'd say challenge and do not accept his assessment of that and to be frank, it's definatory in nature.
Yes.
And not accurate. So I just want to be on record stating that and laying that out there.
And I'll go on record as saying I agree with you.
Second. I as well.
And I do think it is important that we do have a board policy that is related to public comment and a policy to follow if there is a complaint regarding personnel matters. That was violated and not followed and neither was, you know, it's a violation of the community participation as well. So hopefully that.
It's a good segue into the minutes. Did you start with? So I asked Jody to update the way the minutes read. Yeah, a little bit. Sorry. So.
It was corrected.
Yeah, okay. So this is. So I asked Jody to update this because when Ellen Holly spoke, the way that it wrote, she, excuse me, the way that it was originally written. Said that Ellen Holly spoke about Moms for Liberty and that was it. I asked Ellen to add. That's Jody. I'm sorry. Sorry. I asked Jody to add the rest of what Ellen was saying about the Taliban and the inflammatory comments. That was that were made last week. There were some cheap shots that were taken. None of it is true. I would like if rhetoric like like what just happened to Jason or rhetoric like Ellen has been spouting, it should be on the record. It should be written down. We should vote on it. Just in case we have to go back for whatever reason. And I think that it should be on record what people are saying, when they're saying it and who they're going at. So Jody, you know, let's, let's write down those those inflammatory remarks and let's just keep it on record. Is that cool?
Well, yeah. I mean, regarding Ms. Holly's statements with, there was input, there was an implied statement that there were members of the board that are involved in that organization that is categorically untrue. Whatever she wants to believe, that's fine, but we've got to get to a point where we stop having community members stand up in front and and speak untruths. And I've seen that consistently now for quite some time and it's really starting to bother me.
Maybe there's a, maybe there's something we can do with policy that we that we speak to. I mean, when, when community members get up and speak of their grievances and issues and their requests, that's one thing. But when, when community members get up and and attack members of the board, the administration personally, that's, that's a whole separate issue.
Right.
And it's just uncalled for.
It's unbecoming.
Maybe we look at that in policy or something. I don't know.
Is there something that prevents us from, you know, we have, we have the time limit set at the very beginning set aside for, for individuals to come to speak? Is there anything that prevents the board from setting aside, setting time aside in the event that any of us wish to speak afterwards? I mean, is there anything like that?
Me to refute the.
I wouldn't, I mean, maybe, maybe to be rebuttal, but it doesn't have to be. I mean.
That's something we can talk about in policy.
Okay.
And that's a, that's about policy then or something. I want to be opposed to. They want to speak here, but can provide it writing. Interesting. That way we had a writing as part of the record. That's a good one too. I like that. Think about it. Bring it up in policy. Okay.
So back to approval of regular enclosed session meeting minutes from August 14. In anything else that, any other corrections that need to be made to the regular minutes? If not, then I would like a motion to approve. We'll have to do the them separately. So the minutes of the regular meeting separate from the closed session, simply because Matt does not have the closed session minute packet.
I move to approve the minutes of the August 14th, 2023 regular session school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the August 14th regular session school board meeting as presented, as monotone by Mr. Andre earlier. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard? Is excuse, Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
And is there a motion to approve the minutes for the closed session?
I move to approve the minutes of August 14th, 2023 closed session school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the August 14th closed session school board meeting as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten? Yes. Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
I'm standing.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to general and other fund bills. Mr. Trun, do you have?
Yeah, this evening's general other fund bills covers checks number 149930 through 150015, whatever transfers 152 through 163 ACH, check number 0073 through 0087, and then voided checks 149998 through 150009. And the voided checks were due to a printer trying to eat our checks.
That's always fun.
And then they put a memo together on several of the bills.
Once again, Bill, spot on.
Spot on.
Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Trun?
I have a, I have a couple of general questions. So I saw, we, and I'm sure I know the answer, but I wanted to ask anyway. We've got, we're paying other schools for sports stuff. So we're paying, I'm assuming golf.
Yeah.
Greens fees, stuff like that. And then cross country though. What, what are we, why do we, why are we paying other schools?
I think that was for the Homira invitation. So that sounded the.
Looks like a me.
Yes. So each school district pays part of the cost of operating there. So they have a, can't remember the name of the park.
Yeah, begins with a W, I think. I should know. It's been a reign in for four years, but I can't remember.
Okay, yeah, I kind of figured. All the, all the greens fees and whatnot. One of them was 450 bucks. And if they come to Elkhorn, do we, do we benefit from that as a district that we're bringing in schools to play at, excuse me, I'm sorry, Evergreen?
I don't, let's say we benefit or we benefit.
Everybody pays a fee. Each school pays a fee to purchase.
Yeah, this is such a low, we benefit from them letting us use because it's such a.
Right.
You know, sometimes we'll host invitationals and then we make a little on that.
Okay.
As you back out all the expenses and things like that.
Cool. Couple more. What, US Cellular phone bill? $166.99.
That US Cellular?
Yeah.
That's for cell phones? So we have got like four cell phones that we have at the district.
Is that through E-rate? Is that part of the E-rate thing?
We do get an E-rate reimbursement.
Okay.
But the phone cost itself, I think we have like a phone at Soffos, one of the social workers has one. Our Browns person has a phone. And then I think we have one in options.
Yeah.
So we have just four.
Yeah.
All right. Last one is I have a killing for the answer to this, but $320 for a desk chair? Are we, are we buying desk chairs?
Uh.
For individual people?
That was, that would have been for a, yeah, like a staff member chair. So it would be like an office chair.
Okay. So a chair. I thought it was bought away by that.
Yeah, I can show you prices between $400 and $500 for a piece of chair.
I don't know if it's a thousand. Probably just was about half three dollars.
Yeah.
They're not cheap.
Furniture is unbelievable.
It is crazy.
I know, it seems crazy.
But having the proper furniture and not that they get 300 in silver is, you know, it's not something you go buy at Walmart for. But it's economically, they're less than.
Well, here's the thing.
Paying out the workman's comp claims.
I was just going to say that. It's way less than paying out workman's comp.
And we have a service through workers comp where we have an individual come out and does ergonomic studies of our office staff.
Yeah.
And then adjusts the screens and heights and chairs and where you figure it seems like this is necessary. People say, oh my goodness, I feel so much better.
Yep.
And they realize I had that back paying. Awesome.
Yeah.
There was the answer.
Any other questions?
I don't know.
No, no, I was just changing my screen.
Oh, okay. I don't know if it's, this is the appropriate venue for it, but I mean, almost in every single one of these, I see something in relationship to Avid. Like some type of, some type of convention or something along those lines. Why is it that it's every single one? Anybody have an answer to that?
There was, there was $5,000 in travel.
That probably came through really to the conference.
Yep, there was 11, 12.
Yeah. Well, several years ago, we ended, and we can talk more about this in the curriculum instruction version. We're going more into depth, but we had, we've always had a curriculum instruction budget. I don't believe that it's significantly changed, but we adopted Avid isn't just a program that's staff training, development and teaches them how to use different instructional strategies and tools. We used to use CRIS. So prior to us utilizing Avid, you would see charges for CRIS or other trainers coming in. We just chose to go to a more systematic approach, which happens to be under that umbrella of Avid and utilize those budgetary dollars for that purpose. So whether it was Avid, you know, or pre-Avid, it would have just been more random different trainings or pieces coming in. First time I worked for Elkhorn was I was a consultant with NWA and I came to do that training for the staff through NWA. We was in a charge for that. We just have gotten that more systematic approach for that training and that. So you do see where it gets titled in, yep, that was an Avid training. But if it wasn't Avid, it could have, you know, a different training related to similar to it.
I guess it's more along the lines of why is it every single, like, are we sending people to conferences that every single two leaves?
No, no, no.
No.
I mean.
No.
Okay.
No, the summertime, there was a summer training and then we did have a training here where an Avid presenter came. So I don't know if it's related to that one.
No.
The one for, yeah, that's like in my class.
Yeah, that was, I think we sent 11 or 12 teachers to training. That had, they were first timers. They had never gone to that training.
Right.
We'll dive into that in the curriculum.
So need a motion to approve?
I move to approve the general other fund bills of August 28th, 2023, check numbers 149930 to 150015, wire numbers 152 to 163, ACH numbers 73 to 87, voided checks 14998 to 150009, combined amount of $192,420.62 as presented.
Just to correct that it's $421.62.
421.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the general other fund bills of August 28th, 2023, check numbers 149930 to 150015, wire numbers 152 to 163, ACH numbers 73 to 87, and voided checks 149998, 1502 to 150009 in the combined amount of $192,421.62 as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Okay. We have our summer operations and maintenance report.
This is typically the board meeting where we share with you kind of the updates that occur during the summer in terms of making projects and this preparation at the start of school year. So Eli put together the report. Eli mentioned millions ground supervisors. I'm going to turn it over to Eli.
Nice to meet you all. Excited to let us share what we've done with the summer. So we get started. All right. So here are the main projects that we're focused on. The two things that won't be, I guess, highlighted pictures will be the stadium lights because we're just lights now. It's all place and glowing. And another one will be the tickets flag pole. We don't have a spotlight on there yet in the building. So the flag pole isn't, the flag is on the pole yet, but it is as called, ready to go. So I did like probably take pictures of just lit up lights and a pole on the ground. So, but those are completed. So here's kind of what we looked at, Bill and I going forward through the summer. So we kind of looked at these and I think it was November we met last. Over the different projects, foreign project was one big one with some asbestos removal, some playgrounds installed. And there was some door replacements happening here at Jackson Elementary. They were just at a place where they're becoming a security issue without being blocked. They're used daily multiple times. So felt the need to do the rust locations to get fixed and then obviously that little flag pole. So I wanted to have updates in the tech end department. So I kind of want to start off a little bit with the flooring project. So every summer my custodians spend about 90% of their time doing floors. I kind of presented a little bit on this before where we have to move everything out. There's a lot of lifting, a lot of man hours are spent moving furniture, awkward furniture, and it does cause and has caused what this comp claims multiple times with district. I've only been for two and a half years and that too. It is, it is an issue and trying to look at better ways of utilizing my custodian's time during those short summer months that we have. Deep clean and prep the school for next year. There's examples. So we have this in the high school that's by Jackson. The amount of furniture that has been pulled out every year to then deep clean, strip wax these floors. So.
And furniture is expensive.
And furniture is expensive. Yeah. It can get damaged. You know, we've had fall on people, we've had shoulder injuries and so forth. Here's another example, just the process they go through. I kind of want to showcase. Now they do wear special shoes, rubber shoes with these are really grippy webbing at the bottom to help with even the falling. Yeah, we've had issues with that in the past. But yeah, it is a process up here. They put on a chemical stripper on top of the wax, which involves all the comp they spend. You know, probably a day or so cleaning out one room, getting it down to that bare CBT to then add three layers or two layers of wax on top. It is very time consuming. Again, it does look very nice when it is done. I will agree, but I feel that their timing spent much better in other places. So here's another example we did at the high school. So this was asbestos floor that we had. We had three locations that still had asbestos tile. So I thought, well, let's take out that hallway first, let's get rid of that last bit remaining asbestos tile we had at the high school. So here on the left, you see the picture that's after the room has been fully abated of all asbestos. They're tearing down right now and this is after the third party, the third party air test to make sure there is no revenue of asbestos in the room. And it's prepped for the new flooring to be laid down. Here's their picture, like on the right one, see the white patch marks in there? So that is where there was some significant cracking happening in the concrete. So if you notice it goes on the classroom, see that now you'll see cracks to the floor. And CBT will show those cracks because of how it's installed, the piece of that fuse, you'll see those cracking. So when they pulled off the old flooring before they laid the new flooring, which is in the left, they patched all those cracks, reinforced them and then leveled the floor out. And we get this nice after effect. This was a LVT flooring, luxury vinyl tile. It's very durable, 2500 warranty. Doesn't require any shipping or waxing.
The new floor is on the right, correct? Is that?
Yeah. And then here are another examples. After they pulled the flooring out of this classroom, that, all that gray in there is all self leveler. So you can tell this room had pretty kewy office in it. So I'm guessing the floor left cracks in it. So they poured all of this self leveler. See the guy in the back there, he's spattering out the edges right now. And then the new flooring installed and they've got suited in the background, they're cleaning. Essentially, now that we have the LVT in those rooms for the next summer, from now, it will be simply moving porch from the side, putting a wet mop over it, dusting it, and going again. So and if perhaps something does get damaged, they're modular, which is nice. We have leftover script footage. If the tile gets damaged, it really just pulls up. You lay a new one in, it goes the way I think that it was damaged. Here at the tech end department, they had issues with the heaters, auto shop, doors open up. It's kind of hit or miss if they turn on. It was frustrating for the tech end departments along with the students in the winter time with north facing doors. They get a lot of cold air in. It just, it wasn't conducive what they're trying to do in there. So we added new heaters in there. So now they're hot water heaters, the new thermostat, new way of functioning. Worked great. Don't have to remind you because the boiler is still off, but no boiler is on. You're not going to get hot water to them, but so when they do have the motors on, probably the next couple of months here, we'll be able to test those things. And they also have a two-year warranty on them too. If there is any issues, we can fix it on our time. So available addition to help them out in their department. So in Tibbetts, for whatever reason, they never painted the trim when they were installed back in 95 in a lot of the areas. There's also a head custodian when she was there, but she did a lot of half painting on the walls. So a lot of like half things painted. It was kind of didn't belong in there. It was a different color, it's unfinished. Yeah. So we used a local guy we've used multiple times in district. It was a fantastic job. So he went and he did all the metal trim that wasn't painted previously and touched up, make it look like there's some gum and it's nice. And next little slide is another good example. I'm not sure why it was blue and happily painted blue. So we. So that was in most of the bathrooms had had that. And then some of the hallways too, it was just like partially finished work. So I was like, well, let's get the, sort of colors right. Let's, let's.
Elkhorn.
What like pretty like Tibbetts in the west side, they've had blue for some reason or trying to get rid of it. So going back to their.
Years ago, that was their school color.
Yeah.
Before they adopted the Elkhorn colors.
Here at Tibbetts, this was not building and ground funded project, but I was kind of roped into a little bit towards the end. So they got a donation to add some playground equipment out there. So I just want to kind of showcase that that was done and finished for the most part. It does look good. It was inspected and ready to go for the kiddos. Coming back to school next week. West Side, same thing. This was parts we planned about buildings and grounds. The piece of equipment that was there was in total disrepair. It was in horrible shape. It wasn't safe for the kids and kind of had to block it off. Is older than, I mean, Matt brought his kids, he's retiring now when he was there. So they were 30 plus year old piece of equipment. We worked with Lee Recreation. We've done a lot with them in the past. They're easy work, great to work with. They did a fantastic job. There's then results.
Get volunteer help too, Lynn Shearer.
Yeah, we got the Browns. I met him, I guess, as vice or teacher there, I believe, or done a PTO or something like that. And so he runs a construction company. So he helped with the removal and leveling of the peat gravel that's in there. And he also pushed it all back to the floors. So we don't take his time and his man hours and equipment through that for us. That was. Here at Jackson, we've had a lot of issues with Marri coming in with rains. We addressed that on our buildings. This was probably one of the worst roofs in the district as of right now. Above section seven and six it was. Over some classrooms, we've always had leaks coming through. Nothing about this, we have more asbestos doing this too. We had some asbestos drain elbows that were removed during this process. Nothing about this, we have more asbestos doing this too, we had some asbestos drain elbows that were removed during this process. Um we work with IRS out of Kenosha, they do a great job of kind of uh working with us on getting the bids process for that. Go to the next slide, uh turned out great. A whole new tear off and reinstall, that's a thirty year roof, so it'll be here a long before we'll be gone, but kind of it's usually placed again. So
Nice.
Uh it's the best room you can buy, it'd be great, uh so we got that in, that's completed. Uh Jackson Doors, uh this was one that we've had a lot of security issues with. Uh because it was a top and bottom latching door, with just bark of Wisconsin, we got a lot of snow, it's salt, it rusts. Uh kind of lots of issues, um I know Brian Mars always worked on these doors at least a dozen times every winter, just tracking latched. So we've worked with uh quality door, those are new ones, just installed. Um we worked grant and inspected them today, actually, the guys are here installing them right now, they'll finish the other two doors in the next two days. So I told they had me done by September fifth, so it kind of went to last minute, but uh will be done, so we'll go to the next slide, these are their two doors, these are by the playground. Um other thing with these doors is there is a magnet pole that holds them shut. We really shouldn't be having though, because if you were standing in a fire emergency trying to exit, because it's not labeled that well, you're gonna hit that door, it's not open for you, you gotta hit this button on the side. So we placed these doors, we're getting rid of that, so now they're technically up to code for fire emergencies. And the same thing, top, bottom latching doors, a lot of rust, plates are constantly moving around and not latching properly, and we've had issues where just pull the door, even though it's locked, they'll just come right open, so we placed them, we just solved that security issue too. Uh we have a schedule with all our gym floors, uh throughout the district each year, which ones get sanded down and repolished. So we got the middle school gym redone in Jackson, needed some love too, so we repolished that one. So then the elementary's around a five year rotation, uh middle school around a three year, and high school's on two, so next year we'll redo the school, high schools. And look, this picture kind of shows the waxing that Tomas does, and if you look at the picture on the right, you see the really shiny, kind of fades out. So that's kind of the process they have to go through every year. To do that, it looks great, trazl, if a lot of people remember, get rid of the trazl, now that'll stay. Um but because it does pop, you can see at the left, on the right there, it really does come through and shine like my glass when he was finished. He does a fantastic job, but you see the work and time it takes, this is the Galsin cafeteria, we're at the high school. Um stripping, putting down a few coats of wax, uh it takes a bit of time, it does look great. Um but I guess that you can, you know, cause issue in the future, so we're trying to address those things. Uh we kind of brought this up, uh last time we met, about the energy that we're kind of, Bill and I are looking at, trying to save and make things a little more, you know, cost effective through the district, so we've made some changes as far as our utility bills. This is a kind of snapshot of two of a day, two uh two different days, uh one in April and one in June. The blue line is before changes, the green line is after changes. And the orange and red are the temperature out at those days, and you see they're fairly similar temps. Uh the changes we made saved us total three thousand dollars that that month, just utility costs.
Nice.
So the idea here is with the system that we put in, you can kind of monitor what we're using on our peak demand times. Make changes to offset a lot of that, so we can recoup a lot of those spots there, it's kind of basically just burning out the window right now. So having stagnant starts, yeah.
Is that our net saves or that gets divided in half because of the comp?
This is our net saving right here.
After the, after we pay the other share of the company?
Correct. And that's for two years.
And that's for one month.
Yeah, yeah, that's just one month right there. So a lot of the, we have a lot of air handling units, we got a big piece of equipment, those pull log use. And how the schedule was kind of set up initially, a lot of those things were to hit around the same time. So you get this massive spike, and our peak demand charges start at nine and go until ten.
Yeah.
So you're getting that top tier pricing during that huge window. So my look at that, we got to lower that amount that we're sucking in as much as we can during that window of time. So if I can push off units and then shut them off earlier, we're reducing that by a ton. So my thing thought, especially at the high school, middle school, largest buildings, most populated buildings, especially in the summertime, they're both utilized pretty much all summer. If we can kind of separate, segregate the buildings into sections, I can turn off a whole section. Four or two people are in there, I don't need to have twelve pieces of equipment on for two people, right? If I have people in the gym, the weight room, and the field house, that's fine, it goes on, all those classrooms don't even need to run. I can turn all that off, same at the middle school, you know, people are gone by four o'clock, whatever, they're running until nine o'clock, and no one's in there. Or maybe I have a handful of custodians cleaning, you know, but I'm not gonna keep the whole building running.
You already moved that chair.
Correct, yeah, it's still, it's an unoccupied mode, it's not, it's gonna spike up to ninety degrees in there right away, you know. You're gonna have probably an hour or two, it's fairly fine, and if you just have people move around, it's an unoccupied mood, it's still venting air. We're just not chugging a lot and keeping that sort of temperature, so doesn't make sense to have things who I bought it in.
I think Jason and Eli kind of alluded to, we're working with the company who has the software that monitors the kilowatt usage, and then we're doing a shared savings with them for these are two years, I know we see the total savings after that, so that's very cool.
So here's a vessel of the high school right here, so it's a little more up and down because we have a lot of people in and out quite a bit. So it's not as much, uh we're still making adjustments, I mean, it's
So that savings was just from the middle?
That's middle school, that's high school.
Wow.
At least those two buildings are very like
They're monitored.
Five thousand dollars.
Correct, I'm doing it for all the buildings, we're just seeing the numbers on these two, so I don't have the system installed at home, so.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Yeah.
We can buy a lot of chairs with all that stuff.
Yeah, I was, I was always blown away by the door costs, how much was like
Oh, yeah, so the middle school, we haven't arrived yet, because they were kind of custom work, because the the bank of doors is so bizarre over there. Things are bank of like nine or eight, something like that.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be done now until next month, but that was like a thirty thousand dollar cost just to redo those doors.
Yeah, there's a lot of the doors at the middle.
Yeah, so I mean, it's like a bank of eight, and there's like there's two sections of like eighty eight, so it's not just like out here, it wasn't bad. But you're looking at steel core doors, you know, actually, those technically are the cheaper doors, there's more expensive ones that are gonna last longer, it's still a forty year door, like, yeah, we're gonna be gone by the time it goes, it'll be replaced again. Um so I probably just go with these ones for now, um they're gonna be just, just fine with paint and stuff, but um yeah, they're not cheap, and they're, I believe times on are still, you know, very, I ordered doors for Emily, and they're still not in yet, I ordered those in the fall, well, what?
May.
They're not due until October, and that's only four of them, right?
Yeah.
Four just solid core wood doors.
With a lower window.
With a lower window.
Before we get to that, do I have a question for you? Um so you, we talked about security doors and then being able to code or fire or not.
Yeah.
So our, our doors, our security, obviously a big concern.
Yeah.
Are we, are we good with security doors, will be more of these magnetic doors?
There's only two doors in the district that have that weird magnetic push button.
Okay.
I'm not sure why that was, why that was installed, or why that was installed, I know that that magnet wasn't there, the door would hang open. If it was like a quick fix to make them sort of stay shut, I don't know, because again, the bottom latches, they wouldn't latch really because of the rust and the plates that are there. It's like one screw holding it in, and it's, you know, just it grows, you throw it in salt, does that? So I mean, that might been why, I'm not sure how long it was installed, but.
Other than that, we fixed the issue with codes and security, or we're a secure door district.
Correct, there's no doors that are gonna be like that, that could, that could push open, there's a lot of people have a problem.
Spending a lot of money on chairs up in doors. I'm gonna get an
Any other questions?
Alright. Alright, we have the director's report tonight.
Alright, well, here I am with the annual seclusion and restraint report, which is, for those of you new to the board, something that's required every year. That we report out kind of what our total use is, and we monitor that very closely at the building level. Um and anytime it's utilized, parents are notified same day, all of, all of those things, but it is something that we monitor, and the state monitors, and we kind of look at always, how do we reduce the not, the use of seclusion and restraint in our schools, in terms of addressing that behavior before it gets to that point. So tonight, um I obviously have the required numbers on the first slide, um that we report out. And it, it looks at, you know, your total incidence of seclusion, your total incidence of restraint, the number of students with disabilities that are involved in those incidents. Um and in our district, that's a hundred percent of the students. Um and so that's kind of where we fall. If, I believe you all have access to the building level data, if you want to see a breakdown. Um but this box here is what gets reported to the state each year and is, is looked at. Um I think seeing these numbers can be difficult, especially if this is kind of your first hearing that this is a thing in the district, but I really want to spend the most of our time together tonight, kind of talking about how we're gonna move forward, what ideas we have about how do we address behavior that's challenging before it gets to the level of, of a safety concern. Um I just want to reference too, like from a statewide standpoint, it's very common, that seventy eight, uh ninety percent of the data with this is elementary schools, and that's the same trend that we see here. Um this is not something that we've seen reported in our middle and high school. Um it is really more at that early age when, when kids are really learning how to regulate their emotions and their behaviors and and, and it's, it's commonly at the elementary level. Alright, so on the next slide there, I just put a couple definitions. Again, I'm not gonna read through this, but I just wanted everybody here to know what are, what are we working with when we say seclusion and restraint, what are what are the definitions we use? Um I also linked in here the board policy that was last updated in twenty twenty. Um and then I added some procedures that we were kind of drafting this summer, that I just wanted you to be able to take a look at. That provides further detail around kind of how do we, how do we um implement the board policy? So that everybody's clear on, on what, what are the requirements around seclusion and restraint, how are we gonna monitor it at the district office and provide targeted support where needed. So I just pulled a couple key updates out of those procedures. Um but I guess one kind of being that we really want to have that debriefing with the team involved within twenty four hours. So if, if people aren't back under emotional control by the end of the day, it would happen the next morning before school starts. Just to really talk through, like, what are, what are the triggers, are we notify, noticing any patterns, how can we respond differently? Is this the appropriate setting for the student that they're struggling this much in this classroom, kind of all those conversations? And then making sure that we're meeting with the student IP team to review and revise the plan and talk about, you know, hey, do we need to update the functional behavioral assessment, we need to update the behavior intervention plan? Is this the least restrictive environment for the student if every day we're experiencing this, these issues, like maybe we, maybe it's too much, maybe we need to pull back? So really putting into place some, some requirements for our teams to be having IP meetings if there is an incident of seclusion or restraint. From the building level process, um this is new. Uh that if a building has more than three incidents in a given month, then the recommendation would be that we have a meeting scheduled with our buildings, like with that building response team, with some additional district supports. Which I, I don't know if you've met Sarah Chaxel and Allison Collins, but they both work to support the specialized department in a supportive role. And they also both train for our nonviolent crisis intervention um program. So what we'd be looking at is a meeting with one of them, myself, and the building response team, and just sitting down in a supportive measure, like not as a what's going on here so much, but like, how can we help support? This child's obviously really struggling, we have a pattern here that we're seeing.
So it's three times per student, not three times?
There's three incidents in a given month for one student.
Total, oh, so it could be three different children.
Likely, unlikely that it would be, but, because it's usually, it's usually the same two or three kids in a building.
Okay.
But yeah, good question.
Okay.
And then just sitting down, and it could be, it could be honestly supporting the team, because it's traumatic for anybody involved in this. Yep, it's traumatic for the student, it can be hard on the staff and the team, and in just like, hey, what, how's it going, how's the response, like, how have you been responding as a team? Uh what additional support do you need, what isn't working, kind of all those conversations, and I did link like a proposed agenda we would use to look at that. And then determine, okay, do we need to have a follow up meeting? But just having a little bit more of a follow up before it gets like the end of the year, and we're like, whoa. Like that, you know, we, we got to this many incidents and we didn't have those steps in place, so hopefully that'll help.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah.
But please take a look at those and tell me what you think. Um the other thing, if Jason goes to the next slide, we were awarded a three year grant. Um just, we just got notified of this this spring, so it'll start, we had our kickoff actually a couple weeks ago. And it's, it's called the ES three grant, and you, you have this grant for three years. And basically, the, the crux of the grant is that you are assigned, we are assigned two coaches, consultants from DPI, that will work with Allison Collins as our district um internal coach, myself, and then we have an internal coach in each building. And so what we'll be doing is looking at, like, learning evidence based strategies and practices to help support students who have greater neurodiversity, whether it be autism, DVD, or, you know, any, any number of challenges that impact their ability to self-regulate and um learn those coping skills. And then working with implementation teams, which is the IP teams, to implement those services and supports. And we will be having the pretty detailed, like, data collection and monitoring process with this grant. Um and then doing some, some PD around these interventions and strategies, and basically how to create an environment that meets those needs without getting to the point where you're, you're having a situation that asks, asks likes to unsafe behavior. So we just had the kickoff, we had a core team from each elementary school participate in that. Um and then that work gets, gets rolling right away here at the beginning of the year, so we're excited about that. Um additional enhancements, Eli kind of uh alluded to it, but redesigning some of our spaces to create like a calming corner or a break spot, that if, if a kid needs to be removed, it can be to a, it can be to a space that's conducive to regulation. Because what we know about little kids is that if they're struggling to regulate, they need an adult to co-regulate with them to tune to them, to just help them, like, borrow your energy. Um so we want them in a space where they can see you, know that they're supported, know that they're seeing, know that you're there. Um so we're redesigning those spaces a little bit. Um and continuing to just expand upon our mental health partnerships, and just really throw as much support at the elementary level as we can right now, to hopefully try to prevent, you know, any further exacerbation of some of these mental health challenges and struggles that we're seeing in some of our, our young students. Um and I don't have anything else, I put this quote because I believe in it. So I think if we all can get on the same page and, and move, move in the same direction together, you know, we're absolutely gonna see improvement for our students.
What were some of the, so going back to that second slide with the number of incidents, um how does that compare to like this, the last two years?
Great question, I'll let that down for you.
Good.
Um so if you look at the total overall, this year we got two hundred and seventy, if you combine suppression restraint.
Yeah.
Last year was two hundred and thirteen.
Okay.
The year of COVID, it dipped to seventy seven, sure, then we had before that one fifty, one fifty, two forty.
Okay.
So over the last several years, it's been between like one fifty, two seventy is the highest.
Yeah. We have more students that are
I mean, our population has grown, even in the last two years I've been here, the specialized population has grown. Um I don't know if I can answer that specifically, I think at any dim, any given time, it's kind of a wild card as far as students that come in and the challenges they may have, but to really, I guess, focus what our next steps are gonna be. But to really, I guess, focus what our next steps are going to be. It's going to be to help build the capacity of our, our teams to be able to respond to that behavior in a way that hopefully doesn't escalate to the point of seclusion restraint, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So how to like catch it earlier, provide support and strategies to avoid those.
It, it can wildly vary based on, because when you look at the total incidence of seclusions in twenty two, twenty three, in about nineteen students accounted for a hundred and forty.
Right.
So you can, and it can very greatly depending on who comes in and goes out. I will say, I think our team does a very fantastic job of accurately reporting the numbers and figures as well. I, you know, for a fact, I just had discussion with some superintendent friends and, you know, in that regard, are the, are the teams actually reporting when there's a seclusion? It's basically, you remove the kid from the classroom, you need to go to this area to calm down.
Right.
And you need to stay here, then, you know, we're looking, that's being reported as a seclusion. That doesn't happen everywhere.
What are, what are we seeing worlds versus boys? Is it heavily, um, boys or?
To be honest, it is more boys.
However, we did have check up all that where, yeah.
Have, have, have we looked at? Maybe some of the causes of, like what is triggering them? What it, you know?
It's a great question. And that's where, um, the IP process with our new kind of procedures and with the law, honestly.
Yeah.
You have to have, you have to meet after you have an incident of seclusion restraint. And the purpose of that is to do a functional behavioral assessment.
Okay.
Which tries to get at what is going on, exactly what you just said. What's the trigger? Why is this happening? What's the function of the behavior?
Yeah.
What are some behavior interventions and supports that we can put in place to prevent this from getting to this point?
I'm going to give you an example. It's a, it's a personal example. Um, so my husband and I work closely with the sixth grade, um, one of the PLTW classes there, uh, called green architecture. Okay. Um, the first year that we were involved in doing that, we, we've done small building projects to very large building projects with the kids in those classes. But the very first year that we were involved, we had a student who, when he first started, you know, with, um, this building project, teachers were a little leery of letting him be part of it because there were some very severe behavioral issues. Um, but they really felt like his interest in doing this kind of thing would be helpful for him. And what my husband and I experienced was pretty remarkable. Um, you weren't in the district at the time, so this is a number of years ago.
Okay.
Um, from when he first started coming, he had an aide with him every single time. There was always an aide with him. Um, and he had an aide with him. If he was in the building, he had an aide with him. That was the level of, you know, yeah, so very. Um, after about three different times of coming to the class, I asked the aide, do you need to be here? And she's like, well, she's like, he's been a perfect angel ever. You know, like every time he comes here, he's been a perfect angel. So I said, would you mind letting us just have him without an aide? And so they approved that, that was fine. Not once, not once did he ever act out when he was with us.
That's incredible.
And we had him for a couple of hours.
And was it, was it like a very hands-on and like?
Very hands-on. We were teaching them how to, we, they, these kids built a, a playhouse. And they were learning, they were cutting wood, they were measuring, they were, they were building the playhouse.
That's amazing.
And we even did a Saturday, um, where it was totally volunteer, the kids could come or not come. But this, this kid, I mean, he listened so intently because he wanted to be there. Like, and, and there were, he, that Saturday, the week prior, he, um, had been told, if you act out one time this week in the regular classroom setting, you will not be able to participate on Saturday. Not once did he, and, and according to the aide, this kid was, um, regularly put into seclusion, regularly.
So he was, he was successful and he felt engaged.
Successful for an entire week.
Wow.
Prior to that, that Saturday session where we spent like four or five hours with the kids. Not once did he act out that week and have to be secluded.
That's amazing.
So I offer that as an example. Can we find more things?
Yep.
For these kids?
Yep.
That more options for them that would allow them to put their energy out square, you know? And maybe it's not, you know, I, I don't know, I don't understand all of that, but.
Well, I mean, you bring up a valid point. And I think out of these collaborative team conversations, hopefully we can find.
Yeah.
Hey, what are their strengths? What are their high ends?
Right.
How can we build this in?
Right.
Because I think a lot of the times it is a mismatch of like, maybe academics are really hard for them. Maybe they don't have a lot of friends. Now I have to go sit in class with people I don't know how to interact with. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
All of the above, I, yeah, might struggle with reading.
Right.
Um, it's just a lot.
Yep.
And so then their anxiety is higher.
Now that was one example. We've done other projects as well and we've had very, very similar situations with other kids who had severe behavioral issues, but we had none with, when they were with us.
At least we need the hands-on learning track. Um, no, I think that would be great for so many of our kids. It really would be.
Yeah.
Because I think.
So I've just, I've just seen the success of some of these kids who have had, you know, we've been told, you know, you might experience some, and never have we ever experienced one behavioral issue.
That's amazing. I love that. Thank you for sharing that. So I think we have a team that's really dedicated and wanting to do what's best for kids. And like I said, nobody likes being involved in this type of incident.
And so I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, the annual seclusion restraint report, um, that you had linked.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and number one, we had, there was a number of incidences at Lake Lindem and the Genesee Lake School.
Yep.
Um, those aren't technically part of our school district, right?
They aren't, but those are, we have students there. So any of our students that go to other schools, we report any incidents with them in our data.
Okay. So, so even though they're on our data, those still, that's the one done by our school district, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Um, so the next thing is, is there is a huge massive discrepancy between Jackson, the West Side and Tibbetts.
Yep.
Okay, um, outside of just school size, is there anything else that Tibbetts is doing differently that could account for that?
Honestly, I think it's just Jason alluded to it before, depending on the students that come in and, and where they're at. And I can tell you that it's very common for, for some of these students to be newer to our district. Like I'm looking at this date, I'm thinking of the kids that were involved. Um, and they, they might be newer to the district or they may have, like at Jackson, there used to be the program called ACE. So students who went to Tibbetts and struggled behaviorally would come in to Jackson. Okay, so as that transition occurs where people stay in their home, their home buildings, I think we'll see less of that clustering at Jackson.
Okay.
But that's one, one thing that I think.
We have two vendor programs, one in trans and one in west side.
Right.
Okay. And so they, and we have more incidents of seclusion and restraint associated with that.
Yes, I just think too, like if kids, yeah, I mean, you don't know, a kid moves in, they're going to West Side. Well, they went to West Side, they could have went to Tibbetts and then Tibbetts would have had those incidents. But yeah, that's where it fell. It's not that they're doing anything different.
Okay.
Um, and I think, you know, with this grant and this work, it's really about enhancing what's already in place. Are people doing an amazing job every day and they always do their best? And they're always looking for something new to try and something different. And I just think this is about enhancing that with more targeted coaching and support from people who have more training than, than us, you know, in this area. And so I think it'll be good. Any questions?
A couple of comments and then a question. Uh, I got to sit with Emily for quite a while one day and I really appreciate your forward thinking and putting in new procedures and protocols that are going to help, especially with the data and the research and whatnot. And, uh, I went through it and I, I mean, this is great, especially when, when we're going to be able to get a deep, debriefing, uh, meetings. I think that that's awesome. And the questions that were brought up, we're going to be able to figure out new ways to help these cases. If, and if we're forward with them, if it's a program like what Julia had, maybe the data will prove that, you know, we can, we can utilize programs like that or whatever it may be. Um, then one of the other things was we totally talked a little bit about, um, looking at these IP programs a little bit more, reviewing them more, um, you know, getting a little bit, instead of just you're on an IP, you know, I can review them or whatever. I cannot believe. Was that possible?
I don't.
It's, it's, it's a weak thing. Um, but I, I just, I, I love everything you're doing and have forward, forward thinking you are. Um, those are my two comments. Um, we had, we talked about something which I thought would be really neat was changing the name of the, uh, the soft lockdown.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if we're.
Yeah, well, you had brought up that that can cause panic in today's society. Like if you say the word lockdown, I think people automatically go to there's an intruder or we're in an unsafe situation. And we just talked about sometimes really what we need is just the hallways cleared. Um, and so, you know, we were just chatting about sometimes it's not a real dangerous situation, but if someone called it lockdown, you might have staff and students that do think it's dangerous. Um, versus if you said, we need, we need a hall clear or, you know what I mean? So that's just something for the district to consider. But I think that the couple of cases you were referencing to me, I was actually in the building one of those days. And it was that they just needed the hallway cleared.
Right.
And that could be for different reasons. It could be for confidentiality with the kid. It could be to, you know, I don't know, if, if the kid was six-year-old running down the hall, you don't want him to run into anybody. You know, so it could be different reasons. It's not like they're truly dangerous.
Right.
Um, that's just, yeah, something to consider.
Yeah, you're locked out. I mean, I hear lockdown, I'm heading to my kid's school, but if it's something like that, that was part of why I really like where Emily's going. Her direction. Um, the, uh, the, the draft and the new draft in the policy, does this go to committee or?
So the policy isn't touched in that document. I just literally copy and pasted your pop, the board policy.
Okay.
Plopped it in there because I wanted, we did this at the admin learning meeting. I had them look at it and give feedback. I wanted them to review the policy. I don't know, you know, how, how it happened.
So you guys are coming with recommendations?
For, so basically the policy is as it was.
Yeah.
And that was created in twenty twenty.
Uh-huh.
And then the procedures we drafted this summer to kind of interpret that policy at a actionable level.
Sure.
Um, and then add in the, the district review team after three incidents in a month.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, if I just, yeah, I guess I was looking for your input on if it looked okay. The, the admin team did look at it, um, and had an opportunity to give feedback. They were, I don't think anybody gave feedback. I think they thought it looked okay.
Yeah.
But, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like that a little bit, especially the, the, um, the meeting stuff, which looks awesome, but, but we have to, is this actionable for us or position?
No, she's just letting you know, these are the protocols, the administrative gadgets that's given to the staff to implement the policy.
Okay.
So the policy, since it's on top.
Right.
This is how we carry on.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Emily.
And Sarah and Allison, thank you for all of your.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for having me. And we move on to, um, the first reading of new and revised policies. Let's start with the three thirty-one district curriculum policy.
Okay, the curriculum committee and, or the policy committee, I apologize, looked at, uh, this and chose to start out with striking that original language. And then based on conversations and, and went through a couple of meetings that we've been working on this, proposed new language, which is all in blue. Um, which as part of this would be the formation of a curriculum council that would meet four times a year. I think that's, uh, large highlight of that. It would consist of two board members. Of course, any meeting, anybody is, you know, more than welcome to attend, which would post those as such. It outlines who would be on that curriculum council. Um, and what those meetings would look like. Does include again the course approval process. Um, but basically it's starting all over with that policy.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a complete rewrite.
I think, I know that part of issues, um, in the past had been dealing with the idea like, you talked about it earlier, what did with the hiring committee, right? Like we had, we had parents on the hiring committee. But if I remember correctly, part of what the issue was is that they also have to be teachers, right? And there was something along those lines? No, Chris, I remember something along those lines.
No, we transitioned to, we, we had parents as, we get into that hiring season, it gets, moves very quickly. We had a challenge finding parents to, that were able to, willing to serve on the committee for the whole time of the day. We also had several interviews where we had confidentiality issues.
Sure.
And components related to that. And so we started utilizing staff who were also parents.
Right.
Sort of those. And that's where I said, when, I think that's what you're referring to.
Yes.
Fulfilling that.
Yeah. And so, I mean, I think, I think it's important.
To delineate that the parents are not also staff.
Yeah, because I mean, we have it out here saying one and one or two educators from each level. But the fact that, that we have.
That's a good point.
Parents from each level is important.
A non-staff member parent.
Yes, yeah.
We can add that in the next.
Yeah.
Maybe that revision after we're through.
And I guess the next question is, is in the event that that can't happen for whatever reason, for like the whole example you just gave where somebody's just not able, we're just not able to find somebody. What happens at that point?
I don't think we'll have a problem.
I don't think so either. We're sorry. I don't, I don't think so.
Hiring that goes on all year.
Yeah, true.
And, and sometimes at a very short notice, so.
Okay. I think we're good there. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? And this is just the first reading of this policy.
Yeah.
We'll look at the flag policy. This is a brand new policy. It's not in blue just because it's not a revision to an existing policy. Um, and some conversations related to this one, some clarifications as well. Um, I think some, you know, where I feel that some questions related to that is important because within the school, we do have a lot of flags that are exceptions to like the academics, the university flags. Those are all acceptable and so forth. Um, one for those that have questions related to that. Any questions related to this policy? I don't know if everybody had a chance to read through that.
So, uh, I guess, quite the question, so under the exceptions, let's go with A for exceptions, the temporary flags. Okay, my question for this part is, is, um, it's at the end is the quantifier, which is provided they align with the overall spirit and purpose of this policy. I'm assuming we are the arbitrary, the arbitrary arbiters of what, whether, what's the spirit and purpose of the policy? The reason why I ask is as we were going through the, uh, the high school, uh, during our annual meeting, there were definitely flags of, on stickers upon, on doors that could have been viewed as a.
Medical standard.
Well, I mean, specific occasions, events, months, um, you know, stuff like that where, where it could be risky. So who is the arbiter of that? Would that just be the principal? I mean, that.
Wasn't there language in here to request? We originally have language in there. I think that related to the request for the exception or.
Well, under temporary flags, it says. And so specific occasion or events may be displayed with prior rules from the school.
From your school board.
Yeah.
Under temporary flags. I can, don't know how I missed from the school board.
Yeah.
So I, I think.
Yeah.
Exceptions and special circumstances.
Yeah.
I think the discussion in this committee, um, was related to. The actual flags that are being posted and so forth, not related to. Specific stickers or things like that, correct? That was the discussion that the committee had.
Okay.
And right there where you're at, you've got some. This, it's a D and a A implementation, of course, which A B.
That should be an E.
E is the D.
Oh, yeah.
G B.
C D.
Oh, should be A B.
A B and A B, yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Jody, yeah, the, the last provision on that.
Under. Exceptions and special circumstances, the, um, the classroom learning, does that include like in a Spanish classroom, having the Mexican flag, the. A Costa Rican flag, whatever they're.
But yeah, that would be the classroom. So they don't have to come, that's.
Yes.
The judgment economy of that's. But I think what, yeah, that, that temporary flag would be like it is. X month and there's a special flag would like to be able to post that or.
Sure.
And they would need to come and request that from the school board for consideration.
Do we need to have language in here that allows for the, um, the flags that are hanging in the cafeteria at the high school?
I felt it was clear from the, um. The classroom learning piece, educational activities.
Okay.
I view it all, you know, the colleges, the banners, all of those.
Okay.
Educational piece.
Got it.
We can always modify if at some point. You're gonna go, hey, wait a second, that was, uh. You know, educational.
Sure. Okay.
I know that was the discussions that we had, was.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we, we wanna be able to have those, but I just wanted to make sure that our language was inclusive of those flags. But I, I think you're right. I think that covers it.
This is the first reading, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Um, email signature policy. This was the policy committee had a desire to bring greater uniformity to our email. Email format and the structure of the signature lines and so forth, which is very common in private practice or industries that. But very tight controls. We have not had. Tight controls in, in the operating school leadership in that regard. Um. So it does get the, that guidance, um. In relation to that. Which will just need to do some staff development on, on that and. How to structure that, but that can get covered in, uh, to staff giving the text down. Um. The areas that would. Probably, um. Where people have to make some changes is in the. Prohibited content area.
Mm hmm.
Where people need to go through and.
And then folks.
Yeah, like I have a quote in mind, I just need to go ahead and strike that on the signature. I think it probably stemmed from. You know, we did have. A staff member who had a, um. Was it a quote or? I can't remember, something posted in the signature line and went out to students.
Yes.
Parents.
Yes.
So just bringing more uniformity there and avoiding that.
Yep.
Sort of. Concerns, correct? Did we restrict comic sans or they still can choose?
Did we restrict that?
Any questions on that? Yeah, is it, I mean, is this gonna be received, I mean, the recommended font size, is that? Is that really okay to be received well from the district?
I think that's gonna look too. No, I, I think that'll be received well. Uh, I think when it gets into the restricting what. Some, oh, you're restricting my personality or my. Uh, that other component there. Quotes or their, I'm not saying you shouldn't, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Where I think we'll get some of the, the beef is in that.
Okay.
You know, some people like to list their, um, pronouns within their, their preferred pronouns.
I don't think we've restricted that, have we?
I like the way you look at that.
See, I, I think what's interesting here is technically no. But there will be those that will perceive that including that is making a statement.
Yep.
So. I don't know, at some point, at least you, we don't need to decide that, but ruminating on that this evening because. Administration will be asked that question.
Right.
An interpretation.
Yeah, and just the next topic we need to. Think about it.
Yeah, that's, if we're gonna exclude it, then we need to specifically say that.
And I'm not saying you should exclude it or I'm just saying.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that if. If that's. The way you wanna go, we need to be specific in our.
I think it should be optional, something. You know, some people that, you know, have a, that has a name that's used by, by the female. They do it.
That is true.
Because.
Like Pat.
Or Jordan.
Tracy or.
Jordan is using both a girl and a boy name, so I can understand why some people would want to.
It's a good point. Yeah, I, I think it should be allowed. I don't think we need to mandate it.
Yeah.
I would say it's allowed to.
Right.
An individual, if they want to use that.
Yeah. I agree with that.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on the first readings? Look at the personnel sheet. It's very lengthy. I know I already have that ahead of time. I think I'll leave it to. Any questions? Um, I believe the professional staff, our police staff. In the hiring season.
You said that last time and then.
Yeah.
And then this.
And then literally somebody was in the audience and said.
We, we had people that had job offers in the last week.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, they chose to stay with us.
Yeah.
Why is it we have something struck out? Is that because the person decided not to go with it?
Oh, this is Jenkins.
Yeah.
There's some, she was on the original list.
She was this morning.
Yeah.
But that's.
So Javi must have updated it.
Okay.
But there's a lot of hiring in August.
Well, that makes sense because she did send out. A, there was a posting that was, so yeah, that must be it.
And sometimes the hiring too. I know we had two new open enrolled students that. The significance of their needs required to have an additional staff member. As for looking for approval of that personnel sheet.
Yep.
Um, I will do approve the personal recommendation sheet for August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Will it, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check. And district mandated drug screening as presented.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check, a district mandated drug screening as presented. Roll call vote.
Mr. Andre, yes. Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll.
Yes.
This is O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yes.
This is Reckles?
Yes.
This is Scarab?
Yes.
School gifts.
Um, for our school gifts, we have one to present this evening. The Nicholas D. Surgery Foundation has donated eight thousand one hundred dollars. For the crushed asphalt path. Addition to the surgery trail on Market Street and one thousand three hundred forty-two dollars for an additional trail sign. Off of Rotary Way. Um. They wanted to have kind of a more delineated the path. You still have to go through some grass. To get to the walking trails, but it more clearly identifies that, hey, there's trails. So I want to thank them for their generous donation.
Yes. Need a motion to approve? Or accept, I should say.
I move to accept the generous gift as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and accepted. Seconded to accept the generous school gifts as presented. Roll call vote.
Mr. Andre, yes. Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
This is Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scare?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second reading of revised policy three forty-three for program and curriculum modifications.
I did not receive any, uh, further feedback from the last meeting. Should be ready for. I own, unless there's any other discussion.
No questions? All right. And needing a. A motion to approve.
I move to approve revised policy three force three program curriculum modifications as presented.
Second?
Second.
So moved in and second, moved and seconded to approve revised policy three forty-three program curriculum modifications as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre, yes. Uh, Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
This is Reckles?
Yes.
And Mr. Scare?
Yes.
And the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four salary adjustments for supervisors and administrators. That was. Discussed, um, in the closed session last time. So. Need a motion to approve.
I will approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four salary adjustments for supervisors and administrators as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four salary adjustments for supervisors and administrators as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
This is O'Donnell?
Yes.
This is Reckles?
Yes.
This is Scarab?
Yes.
Right. Announcements?
Hey, there are a number of announcements. Um, just a reminder that we have on this Wednesday, the, um. Closed listening sessions with the staff, ten thirty in the auditorium. The rotation is as follows. It's listed there. Um, and then I wanted to share with you, um. Coach Stoltz, who's our, one of our powerlifting coaches, shared with us today that Jessica Haggerty. Um, she won state and nationals in the U S in powerlifting for her weight class. Um, she earned a spot in the Team USA, went to the international competition. She is the world champion at a hundred and fourteen. Or fifty-two kilogram weight class.
That's absolutely.
Which my daughter, who's totally pumped for the weightlifting, she's like, oh, she's a massive weight class. We thought you were gonna get to, uh.
Yeah.
Powerlift or be on the team with a world champion.
A world champion.
Yeah, as a high school, we're going, I'm sure she's going into her senior year.
That's just.
That's fantastic.
Awesome.
Yeah. It's really, really cool.
Yeah. And I included a, a link in your board notes to the picture.
Yes. Um. Do we need to let you know, uh. If we're going to be there on Wednesday?
Um, it's, it'll be posted, um.
Okay.
But yeah, it would be good just so we know if we have a call or not.
Sure.
It's posted.
And then the eight thirty to ten thirty is that, that's like the.
That's the welcome back. So what we do is the, um, service awards and then I just do a little message to the staff.
Okay.
Kind of a state of the district message and then we. Roll from there, yeah.
Oh, I have it blanked out on my calendar, so I'm planning to be there the whole time.
Same with me. I, I get the day off at work, so.
I'll be like, thank you for doing that.
I am maneuvering to get off, but still pending.
I'll be there for that, so Tim.
Yeah, you don't want to hear me talk. I get it.
That's. It wasn't gonna be the time until you changed.
Okay, we need to adjourn to closed session. So looking forward.
If you're the whole thing.
Um, yeah, yeah, you kind of have to.
I make a motion, uh, that we go into closed session first into Wisconsin State Statute nineteen. That eighty-five parent one guarantee common. Common parent F and, um, parent G and Wisconsin State Statute. One eighteen point one two five to consider or discuss policies and procedures. Were related to gender nonconforming students, which have discussed in open session would harm the reputation of individuals discussed. Require disclosure of confidential student information and to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy with respect to. Potential litigation regarding the same. The school board will also review letters of interest for the creation of a financial stability. Ad hoc, um, advisory committee and discuss a contract regarding an employee. The school board will reconvene in open session or action as appropriate and or to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
Need to drink water?
I'm good.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to contemplated closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five. C F and G and Wisconsin State Statute one eighteen point one two five. To consider and discuss policies and procedures related to gender nonconforming students, which have discussed in open session would harm the reputation of individuals discussed and require disclosure of confidential student information. And to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy with respect to potential litigation regarding the same. The school board will also review the letters of interest for the creation of a financial stability ad hoc advisory committee and discuss a contract regarding an employee. The board will reconvene in open session for after as reported and to adjourn to adjourn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gaylord?
Epstein.
Okay.
Epstein, all right. Uh, Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.